Well, John, I think we should start a roll call and then he, since he is active somewhere. If we have to get him on the phone, we'll get him on the phone.
Okay. This is the City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, October 21st. We'll have a roll call of the members. Mr. Bichilli, present? Present. Okay. Mr. Limina?
Yeah.
Present.
I just promoted him to a panelist, so he should be on in a second.
Okay.
Arthur Iran, unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I heard you, John.
Okay, Mr. Lopes?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Pelton?
Here.
And Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Quorum is present. The first application before the board is application A 2020. This was continued from the meeting of 9:23. This is the application of Ari and Sivon Ervings, 185 Endicott Avenue, Revere, requesting a variance of parking to enable the appellant to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on Lot Dash at 185 Endicott Avenue in Revere.
Okay.
Unmute?
You'd have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you for your patience. Um, thank you guys very much and thank you for the continuance. We spoke with Joanne and...
Name and address for the record.
Uh, Sivon Ervings, 185 Endicott Ave.
Okay, now you were able to speak to the Ward Counselor?
Uh, we were able to speak a couple of times. Really enjoyed that conversation. She suggested that there might be some statutes that we're continuing into. We just wanted to clarify that we're not looking to do construction. We were just looking to reduce the parking requirement. But we're requesting another continuance for another month so that we can continue to do legal research and follow up and see if we might be eligible to be grandfathered in.
Okay, because there is a concern with the parking in, it's almost on the sidewalk here. Because you wanted the two vehicles in front of the garage, correct?
Uh, I think, you know, we understand that we can't park in front of the garage. So I think we're seeking a variance to have the reduced parking requirement. Or we're going to try to find the statute that the councilwoman referenced, which we are looking into at the moment.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in the audience? I don't see anyone raising their hand or unmuting. So I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing none or seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Is there a motion on the floor to continue? John, Arthur?
I will.
Okay.
We have a motion to continue to November 18th at 4 o'clock. Do you vote yes? Yes. Mr. Bichilli votes yes to continuing to November 18th at 4:00 p.m. Let's make, confirm that one more time.
The 18th is a Wednesday.
Right, 4 o'clock. Mr. Bichilli voted yes. Mr. Limina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is continued until November 18th at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you all very much for your time.
John, welcome.
And next application is application A 2022. This is the application of Bojan Jurek, 14 Charger Street, Revere, requesting minimum lot area, rear yard, front yard, minimum lot area for a duplex dwelling and driveway location to enable the appellant to construct a duplex, two-family dwelling on Lot 580 and Lot A2 Malden Street, adjacent to 325 Malden Street. This was continued from the meeting of 9:23:20. The applicant did submit the required plot plan.
Okay, the applicant, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Bayan Urdich. And address?
14 Charger Street in Revere, Mass. 0215.
Do you wish to add anything to the application or?
No, I think we said everything last time. I mean, just a quick summary on that it's a variance for the lot size, it's not obstructing any views, it's not adding additional hazards and that that only requirement last time, or one of the requirements last time was that the map, that the additional drawing was missing, which is here today, which would clarify the questions that we, that were posed last time.
Okay. The Ward Counselor, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, yes, please. So with all due respect to the gentleman's attorney, that wasn't the only ask at the last meeting. The other ask at the last meeting was that you guys would reach out to the neighbors and the, especially the director butters, the Conti family and try to, I, I have heard that you have not. I, I've been in contact with the Contis every week since the previous meeting. And, you know, this, this is an issue. I know it's, it's a neighborly, I know Mr. Jurek lives, you know, right there. And I know it's kind of a neighborly issue, at least that's how I had seen it before. But as I continue to look at the, um, the plot of land, it, it does seem like it's, it's, you know, being crammed onto that, that small lot. So what I would recommend was that, A, you go back and you, you hash out some things with the Conti family and try to come to some sort of compromise. You know, I, with all due respect, it's your land and I know you do have a right to develop it into something at some point. But a duplex on that size lot with, you know, the neighbors having concerns, I, I would ask at this point that the ZBA either not approve or continue this at this time. So I would, you know, I would like to let the Conti family speak and we can go from there. But at this point, I, I would not be supportive moving forward as it's currently before you.
Sure, so we, I, I, we have a text message here too. I don't know if that's of any help. After, Bayan, who lives next door, reached out directly asking if we could meet to discuss it further. We never heard back from them and we assumed that this would be okay because we discussed most of the items there. Why they haven't reached out and that they've been in touch with you every week is a surprise to us. We really wanted to meet with them and discuss whatever issues they had. We just assumed that the issues that we discussed last time, which was about the AC, some of the other items were answered and that they just didn't have any other questions. But I do have a text message that shows that we reached out.
Excuse me, my name's Donna Conti. I'm representing my mother, Rosemary Sorrentino, at 325 Malden Street. And I just received one text yesterday afternoon when I was at work. So we, we waited all month for you to reach out. So the day before the meeting is kind of short notice. So I think if we have any questions, we'll go forward with them now, if you don't mind.
Sure, I sent a letter right after the meeting. Bayan sent a text message just to follow up before the meeting. But either way, I'm happy to answer all the questions that you have and discuss further.
My brother wants to talk now.
Okay, well, seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any opponent, I'm proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? We do have on file several signatures and pages of people who are opponents to this. I believe there's two pages, John, or?
That's correct.
Two pages.
With all due respect, people that have signed the opposition, had the opportunity to join the meeting by Zoom and voice their opposition, we could go around the neighborhood and collect as many signatures that are in favor of it. I, I'm not sure how, how much weight something like that would hold or what. I, I think it's important that everyone that's opposing and in support to be able to voice what it is that they're opposing and what it is that they're supporting so that we can make sure that whatever they are supporting or opposing is actually based on factual data.
Well, I agree with you and all due respect, there is no one here that's a proponent. I mean, he already asked, so the only people here are opposing it. So to your point, no one has showed up to back up that you want to have this done and that they're okay with it.
Sure.
Okay, well, first off, we have the, the, the opponents that sent in documentation with their names, addresses, and that is in on file here. The people do have the right to do that. People work and some people work beyond the time that we're online here. As well as we get letters all the time for support and denial. So being that it's a public hearing, I have asked about proponents. I've closed that side of the hearing because no one was there. No one has raised their hands, no one has shown any voice here tonight. So I will go to opponents. If there's any proponents opposed, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Vincent Conti. I am opposed to this project and I will say that I was never...
I'm sorry, you have to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Vincent Conti, Nine Stone Terrace, Marblehead, Mass.
Thank you.
I have never been approached by Bojan at all about this project. I saw him several times in the, when I was visiting my mother, bringing her foods up. He never said a thing to me. As of my sister getting a text yesterday, again, pretty short notice. Thirdly, as far as them saying that they addressed the safety issues and the view, of course the view would be obstructed. It's a three-story building that's going to block the whole corner. And as far as the safety, I have many things that I would like to put down about that. I don't know if I should do that now or I should wait for any other reason.
Um, I will let you speak once again if there's, if we have the, if the time will allow. But I'll ask if there's any other opponents, anyone else opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, good afternoon, Dan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board and certainly my Ward Counselor Ricky Serino. It's great to see you. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am here in opposition to this project and it is for the fundamental reasons of what I've been talking about now for here close to 20 years, both as a member of city government and as a resident. We are losing neighborhoods by allowing the constant construction of homes that are on lots that are not sized for what is being proposed. And we're losing neighborhoods because of it. And I don't think those of you that live in this city would disagree. I mean, if I had to count on, you know, how many people have left because of situations like this, of the overcrowding and the additional vehicles and the strain and stress that's put on our infrastructure, that we wouldn't have enough time. We have zoning ordinances for a reason. And for someone to come up and just want to build because, you know, you know, geez, the, the lot size doesn't fit, but really doesn't matter, let's ignore the zoning ordinance because I feel like constructing a home because it's beneficial to me. Well, you have to treat people the way you want to be treated. If this was the other way around and somebody wanted to impose on your particular neighborhood or build next to your home, but they didn't have enough room, how would any of you feel about that? I know how I feel and I've seen what's happened in my neighborhood. And so I, I couldn't be, I couldn't be any more opposed. I, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of variances. When people have hardships, there's a lot of people who, for example, have had, been paying taxes on two families for, for a long period of time. But now they go to sell the house or they want to, you know, or, or something happens that ends up with the building department coming in and making them rip out a kitchen and so on and so forth, through really no fault of their own. Those type of things I can sympathize with and say, look, this person's been paying taxes on a two-family. They're not, they're not adding any density to the neighborhood. So why not help this poor person? But when it comes to new construction, why in the world would we want to continue? After all that the city has been going through, to continue to add more density to our neighborhoods? It is not fair to the residents that live here, particularly longtime residents like the Conti family. I mean, their mother just wants to have a certain quality of life that she's had for decades in that house. And, you know, a, a, as, as you all know, profit is not a reason to grant a variance. It should be granted only in cases of extreme, in my opinion, of extreme hardship. And that's why, you know, that's why we have zoning ordinances. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I just asked that you think about this. Think about if this house was to be built next to your home and if you would like to see it go forward. I, I, I know, I know, I know what my answer is. So again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else opposed? Anyone else wish to speak? Please unmute yourself.
Should I go now? Should I read my proposal? Yes?
Yes, if it's a short proposal.
Yeah, it's, it's just a couple of quick things. I just... So shortening the corner variance from 20 to 15 feet would make it difficult to turn down the corner, especially with cars parked on either Charger or Malden Street. This is where the city is, down at the end of Charger. Many trucks go up and down that street regularly. Emergency vehicles would have a hard time, fire trucks, ambulance, et cetera. Some of these large trucks have trailers and they'd have a definite trouble trying to get down that corner with cars parked on the side. On top of that, many students walk to two or three schools in that area. And this would be a serious danger zone with them crossing in between parked cars in a very high-traffic intersection. We have had many accidents already over the years. Many have resulted in serious injuries and very sad situations. The issues of this intersection's danger are well documented. In the past, a wall was erected in front of the property. A child was walking to school and was hit by a car, so they put that wall up. This was at least 30 years ago. Unfortunately, there are other variables to be considered. The mailbox is continuously being used.
I'm, I'm not trying to cut you short, but we have to stick to the plot. I don't want the surrounding area or mailboxes because it has nothing to do with the zoning. So let's try to stick with the variances that they're requesting, side yard, rear yard, whatever it is.
What about the parking? See, my point is they'll be parking on the street, on Charger Street.
And that if it's not to do with the lot itself, that's, it's actually almost irrelevant to us making a decision.
It, it has a, it has a garage, so parking will be four-car garage for a duplex. So there will be four parking garage spaces for the space.
Okay, so if there's anything else as far as you'd like to add to that?
Something else to say on that too.
Okay.
So on, so we'll go back to the lot situation, although I still believe that it's a dangerous situation with a car spot because it will be parked on the street, let's face it. But the other part, I believe, is why are they pushing to put this plot, this land proposal so close to Malden Street where they have this, all this property? I believe that in the future, they will try to get a variance for a second lot, which is between the proposed land that they're asking for and that house. I have a plot plan here that shows in yellow is the area that they want. In an orange is the spot that's between their house and the proposed area that they're asking for today. If that land is okay today, who's to say no to them asking for another variance on the land in question in front of us?
Can I just answer that question?
You're going to answer that at the end though. Once we get opponents, I'll allow you to answer all, anything that come up. Is there any other opponents?
Okay, go ahead. I also have questions about the front door. Is it going to be on the side?
Yeah, ma'am, if the plot plan showed all of that, I believe, what they showed where the stairs are and everything. New plot plan?
The plot plans are very confusing because if they're coming off the sides of the building, you know, it's three levels plus, it's almost like a four-story building. So four stories and the back stairway comes out, it has to come out at least four feet. That means there's only three feet difference between my mother's fence line and their land.
Point well taken, yes, that's correct.
And, and the garage, is the garage going to be underneath or is it going to be above? Because that will raise the building even taller, which is very, I don't know if there's a restriction in Revere, how tall you can go and this, we have a neighborhood. This is a very nice neighborhood and they have like a building, four, five stories. I mean, when is it going to stop?
Okay, is there anything else?
Um, the stairs? Is the garage going underneath, will it be underneath the ground or above the ground? And then the other three stories, because then it does add a lot more height onto it. It's just very confusing. I'm not an architect. So to me, I'm just a little confused about how exact tall is this two-family structure going to be?
Okay.
This building will be...
Is there any other opponents? Are there any other opponents? Anyone else wish to speak as an opponent? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Other, now I will ask the applicant to please address the questions that were asked.
Yeah, so there's a garage underneath.
I think the, the biggest concern, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the, the height of the building. The height of the building with the garage will be exactly the same size as their house. So it will not be any taller than the structure of the opponent.
How tall, how many feet?
Exactly like your home, so it's not going to be taller than 30.
You must have that on your building.
Yes, I'm telling you, I'm answering the question, 30 feet. So the structure with the garage goes up 30 feet, which is the same height as your mom's building.
Not on the corner, does that include the garage also?
It does include the garage.
It looks like the garage has a side door going into the garage as I'm looking at the plans here in front of me.
Okay, I can answer that, the plans that submitted, a 30-feet height to the top of the building. That, that's from the, that's from the street level up, 30 feet.
30 feet, yeah. It says 33 feet on the paperwork.
Yes.
John?
33.3, it says, actually.
I'm looking right now.
Yes, that can be adjusted to 30 feet, which is the, the same size as your mom's property, exactly the same height.
That's not what you said. You said it was the same and it's not the same.
Well, I don't believe that even a height is a question to us because I believe they, they're not asking for a variance for height.
Correct, and I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to answer the questions and I'm not sure if I should answer all of them or just the questions that are relevant to what we're asking. We're only asking for a variance in the lot itself. I can point out several projects that have recently been approved that had smaller lot lines where the projects have been approved. We did a lot of research on, on the lot. It does not obstruct the view or cause any traffic jams. Charger Street is a one-way. The children are walking on Malden Street.
All right, I don't even want to hear about the traffic because I'm, I'm more concerned of what was put in front of us for the Board of Appeals as far as your requests for variances. So there is no request for a height variance?
Correct.
Listed here. There are requests for rear yard, front yard, lot area, the minimum lot area, that, that's the concerns that are, we have to address here now.
Correct.
Rich, if you'd like to speak again?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question to the applicant. What is the total square footage of the, the footprint of the building, of the house?
That's also submitted and it should be, is it 1,200? 1,500 per unit.
So that's, that's 3,000, 3,000 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. All right, because I, I was playing with the GIS map online, which is the parcel map. And I know it's about a 5,900 square foot lot. But then you have part of your, on that parcel, part of your home, your, your, the, the home you live in now, part of that is on that parcel. So that takes, it's about 5,500 square feet in total that you're, you have to work with. And then 3,000 of that 5,500 is, is a building. It just, it does seem to me that that's kind of squishing.
It goes into height, it is not a structure, it's a duplex. So it's two and a half floors. Each, each floor.
He's asking the footprint of the building.
The footprint.
With the square footage of the building.
24 by 48. 24 by 48?
Yes. 24 by 48?
Correct. So it wouldn't take up 3,000 square feet of the lot?
That's each unit, 24 by 48, correct?
No, the entire, the entire project. The entire footprint.
Okay.
There's roughly 15 feet that would stay between Malden and the property, Malden Street. Yeah, from the sidewalk to the house.
Is there a porch or is it just a, what's the dimensions of the stairs and the porch there or the landing?
There's no porch, right?
There's no porch.
There's no porch. This is the, the second main of Egress in the back.
That's in the back.
Okay, so what's the landing on the side of the house going to, going towards Malden Street? And charge, and towards Malden Street? And then you have a landing going towards Charger Street? What's the dimensions of those? There's no way for me to look at, at that.
So that's roughly five feet, which these 10 feet from the landing to, to Malden Street, which can also be adjusted and made smaller if needed.
How high?
Okay, I'm, excuse me, I've, it's 10 feet from the property line to the actual house without the stairs?
No, it's 15 feet.
I'm looking at your, what you're putting here from Charger Street to the home.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at Malden Street to the home. Charger Street to the home is 10 feet.
But then you have a, a landing, which is probably at least a three-foot landing, correct? And then you have staircases going down.
On the Charger Street landing, that's a three-foot landing.
And then the stairs going down is, how many steps?
Um, four steps.
Four steps, so?
Yeah.
Which we can put inside as well.
So these stairs can actually be moved to the side. We can move them away from Charger Street and move them to the side of the house where the yard is, which is something we should do, so that it doesn't take away from the 10 feet to Charger Street.
From the house? The landings, how far out does it go from the house?
I have one question. How far out from the house do the landings go on the side? Because that's, you know, because the stairways aren't matching up to your plans, to your blueprints.
I think they do, but I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question. If you can repeat it.
There's only four stairs. You, they have to be very tall stairs to go up to a first floor. You know, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it's, it's, that, those are the dimension. It's about roughly three feet, four stairs, which can be moved.
The length of the staircases for each four sets of stairs shown here are all five feet from the house to the end of the stairs?
It has to be eight feet tall. How does that reach?
So we're talking about the, the, the landing, not the height.
Right, so what I'm asking is from the house to the edge of the stairs, it's five feet?
And then how?
No.
How far out do the stairs go from the house?
The landing is, the landing on the side is five feet. The landing on Charger Street is roughly three feet. So, and like I said, that one on Charger Street can be moved into the yard, so it doesn't even need to be on Charger Street. It, it, it could just be, yeah, we can just adjust it so it's coming from the side.
Okay, it just, so from the property line to the first step on Charger Street is how many feet away?
Right now.
From the property line to the first step, because this plan does not show, I, I mean, we get a small...
For roughly seven feet.
It's about four feet.
So seven feet on Charger Street?
It's about four feet, five feet.
From the street to the stair.
This is the charger.
To the first staircase, to the first step.
Yeah, so from here to the first step, how much, how many feet?
So it's a five feet, but then where the line is lot line, then we have a sidewalk and then the Charger Street starts, which doesn't show.
I want your lot line, not the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, from the lot line to the first step, it will be five feet, then... Yeah, from the lot line to the first step, it will be five feet. Then the stairs would be another five feet, which we can move to the side.
I just don't, so that I just wanted to know that. And then on the, on the Malden Street side, from the property line to the first step, please.
It's ten, uh, ten feet.
Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay. Already, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions that were not answered, Rich? Um, I'm not going to go on with this to a debate, so they answered.
No, I I'll say, Mr. Chairman, I I still think that it is too, we're just kind of trying to smush it on to that lot. So, thank you.
Okay.
We just have one or two more questions, if you don't mind. Um.
Well, this isn't a, I I asked for proponents and opponents already the questions, but I'll be a little lenient, so ask the two questions to me.
Okay, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just hop in.
So this is my husband, Tom Jacob.
Okay, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Tom Jacob, one eighty-eight Winona Street. I'm representing Rose Marie Sorrentino at three twenty-five Malden Street also.
Thank you.
The question is, it's just plain and simple. The concerns are the entrance ways going into the house on the first floor, as I, as far as I can understand. The uh, landings or the stairway width going out. Everyone keeps saying it's five feet, but you have an eight-foot rise going into the first floor.
So my concern was, and they answered the question, is from the step to the property line is five feet away.
Correct.
So it is a ten feet property. Pardon me?
And that raises eight feet up, five, five feet out, eight feet up.
Well, you can build into the land. You don't, you 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 can, you go into the land, so you don't start at zero on the on the land itself. So you have at least three feet that you dig down.
So you are burying the garage a little bit, is what you're saying. You're you're lowering the garage, so you're going to have a little bit of a hill backing out of that driveway onto Charger Street, and you're going to have a stairway there blocking your view coming out of the driveway.
No, so we, like we said, we can move the stairs to the side.
If you're right, if you move to the side, then you're going to just have, you're going to bury the garage down, so your steps are going to go up five feet from there.
No, the stairs with, I'm I'm not sure what the relevant of the question, the relevance of the question is.
Okay, I have a question now that I, that's being brought up. Did, it doesn't show that this driveway is sloped towards the the new proposed home. So are you saying that the driveway is not going to be at the elevation of the street level?
We can keep it if that's the only issue. We can keep it at the.
No, but it's what would you, would you submit it is what I'd like to know.
Yeah, actually, it's submitted like it's going to be on the level with the uh, with the ground. We didn't submit that you're going to go into the ground, but we can uh, we can adjust at the moment.
So if the height is an issue, what we're saying is from the, from the floor up, it's thirty feet total with the garage.
From the floor of what? Are you, it's not, it, I, I'm sorry, I I I just to refresh, are you the architect or are you the lawyer who's representing?
I'm the lawyer.
Okay, so the person that drew these plans up, it appears to me that this shows as a street-level garage. Now you're telling me that it's going to be in, it's going to be put down, there's water concerns on how you're going to have drainage.
Uh, no, you're right.
It's just.
You're right. He did draw it as a street level, but.
Okay, then if it's drawn as a street level, you can't make changes to the plan that was submitted.
Okay.
So these going back and forth, it it it's very concerning to me that this, what if we can do this, we can do that. The plans that you submitted are what we're looking at today and what we vote on today.
Yes, and that's what I want to answer the question. I I'm confused as to the question that was asked and I asked for clarification. And that's what I meant is if if the height is an issue, we can propose to have it built lower. The way we're proposing it right now is at street, it's it's not uh, digging in, it's just at street at lot level. But I'm not sure that height is an issue because we don't need variance on the height, so I'm not sure that I even need to answer that question or address it. But it keeps coming up, so I'm not sure how to, um, if I need to respond to it or just.
Well, having the height of a building that you're you're requesting the dimensional control of going seven feet beyond the back of the house. Height does get into fact, it could do s- side, it could do views of the sun being blocking them. There are a lot of issues with with the height of a building when you're not doing it on the footprint that you're actually allowed. You're you're asking for a variance, so we have to take into consideration a lot of items, not just, and height does become a concern when you're asking for side yard variances. It does become a concern. It's not that we're trying to hurt anybody, but we have to take those into consideration.
Of course, and I want to answer those questions. So if if there's any other questions about the height or if there was miscommunication or misunderstanding about the height, I would love to clarify that.
Not that, so John, am I correct that the height that was that was submitted to us is thirty-three feet?
Twenty-three, yes.
No. It's very hard for me to see.
The plan on the notes section indicates proposed height of two-unit dwelling is thirty feet. It's right on the plan in the notes section.
Thirty feet.
All right, even though some of the other drawings seem to show thirty-three feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Shouldn't this be a concrete situation where we know exactly what they're building, exactly what the dimensions are? It's been changed five.
It will be. That's why we have a plan that gets recorded and it says thirty feet.
Okay, I think we've allowed everybody to speak. Uh, if the ward counselor wishes to end this, I I please do so.
I just have one more question that just kind of popped into my head as we were talking about the garage and um, so if if you're, if if I'm living in your hot, your duplex and I was coming out of the garage that would be closest to Malden Street, how many feet would from, if I'm coming out, how many feet from the Malden Street-Charger Street intersection would I be?
Twenty feet.
So what what would be the footage? So say, because my concern would be is that if a car is turning from Malden Street onto Charger Street and you're coming out of your, the garage on the side closest to Malden Street. I I, I mean, I live in the neighborhood. I know right, right away that would, you know, that's a car accident waiting to happen.
So it will be about twenty feet, just as much as the uh, ho- house across the street, the one that's on the right-hand side. Yeah, roughly about the same.
Are you talking about the intersection visibility?
Yes, so like if I'm pulling out of the garage, what's my visibility to the intersection and what's the visibility? You know, if I'm turning onto Charger Street, is somebody going to see that person coming out of the garage?
The structure is setback from Malden Street onto Charger Street, according to the plan, fifteen feet.
Correct, and plus the sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't matter, the intersection is measured from the lot line.
Sure, but for visibility purposes, so there is additional space between uh, where you pull out from the garage and to the actual street on Malden Street.
But for purpose of zoning, fifteen feet is what is used.
Okay, um. We can take up these calendar item numbers as we go along, um, which is the wish of the um, members. I'd like to ask for a roll call unless anybody else wishes to ask for any questions.
I'd like to bring it on to another time, Michael. I I feel as though they they need to talk to the community just a little more on that. I'm not going to give my uh, I'm not going to say what I really think, but I think they need to talk to the community.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah. The continuance being asked for?
Yes, that's what I'm asking, John.
Yeah.
Uh, hi, Mike. This is John. Hi, this is John. Um. I'm a little bit on the vote side since there's so many concerns and I I agree with uh, Mr. Rizzo and uh, Mr. Serrano. I mean, they're going for a variance on lot size. Uh, my suggestion is for them to scale it down and come back to another meeting. Scale it down and propose it to the neighborhood and see if uh, the neighborhood will accept.
Okay.
The variance issue here, my suggestion is you guys to scale it down and come back in another day.
Okay.
I agree, John.
So is there going to be a with, a withdrawal without prejudice so they can resubmit a plan or are you asking for a continuance?
We're asking for continuance if we have a choice.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor for continuance. Anyone second that motion?
I will second you.
You'll see. Roll call, John.
This is to continue this matter to November eighteenth at four P M.
Thank you.
Al, this is for continuance. You vote yes?
What's your vote?
No. Mr. Bichilli votes no. Mr. Limina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
I would say no at the moment. I don't see any uh.
No.
Continuance is going to make a difference.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
No, I, um, you have one more before me.
I got everybody.
I believe you have that.
I got.
He got.
I got, I got Mr. Bichilli, I got Mr. I got everybody.
Alrighty, then I vote no. No, so the continuance is not voted. Question comes now on the application itself. For the variance requested. Roll call. This is for the variances requested. Mr. Bichilli? Mr. Bichilli votes no. Mr. Limina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
No.
No. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
No.
No. Insufficient, the variances are denied.
Thank you. Thank you to the honorable members of the board.
You're welcome. So we have the next calendar item number?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Very much. We appreciate all your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, the next item is uh, application eight twenty-two-four, continued from nine twenty-three twenty. This is uh, Siniglia LLC, one sixty-nine Princeton Street East, Boston, requesting minimum front side and rear yards, minimum screening, maximum floor area ratio, parking requirements for apartment use to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and construct a five-story, forty-two-unit apartment structure with one commercial space on Lot One, Washington Avenue at the junction of Sherman Street and Washington Avenue.
Okay, um, I know that there is going to be a request for continuance on this. Um, I will just ask, since it's a public hearing, are there any proponents? Please unmute and you can speak or raise your hand by using the Zoom. Seeing or hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. If there's any opponents, you may unmute and speak now. I don't see any um, hands raised, so I will close that side of the hearing. There is a motion to continue this. Um, and I believe that the ward counselor may want to just speak on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So um, Siniglia LLC has been very gracious. They're going to be having a neighborhood meeting within the next week. Um, I noticed um, I I dropped flyers off on Sherman Street on Saturday, uh, so all the residents on Sherman Street are aware. And listen, as the ward counselor, I know this, this has to be really scaled back, that that uh, five stories and forty-two units is just too much for that uh, that lot area. So I look forward to um, discussing more as it gets continued and again, I want to thank Siniglia and Dean Brosil Brown for um, for having a neighborhood meeting to address our concerns. That's the right way to go about it. So thank you.
Okay, a motion to continue um.
To November eighteenth at four.
To November eighteenth.
Al, this is to continue to November eighteen. Yes. Mr. Bichilli votes yes to continue. Mr. Limina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is to continue until November eighteenth at four. And the next application is eight twenty-two-six of Delmi Lemus and Carlos Garcia, nine fifty-one Revere Beach Parkway, requesting minimum side yard setback requirement of ten feet for lots greater than six thousand within the Abbey District to enable the appellant to construct a three hundred and eighty-six square foot addition on Lot three ninety D at nine fifty-one Revere Beach Parkway.
Good evening.
The applicant present?
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Sean Donahue. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicants, Delmi Lemus and her husband Carlos um, Garcia. Uh, they're the property owners of nine fifty-one Revere Beach Parkway in Revere. Uh, my office for the record is located at twenty-one Pauline Street in Winthrop. Mr. Chairman, um, what we're seeking is a variance from the minimum side yard setback requirements of ten feet on each side of the lot. My client proposes construction of an addition to the rear of their building. Um, my clients uh, are the recent uh, had a recent addition to their family in the form of triplets. And they require additional living space. They currently have, uh, I believe, two children. And with the triplets, their family has grown to five, uh, seven, I should say, counting them. So uh, they're in dire need of additional living space. We're asking to uh, propose, as proposed, the construction of the addition is in the real rear yard. Uh, this is actually the property is, was comprised of two separate non-conforming lots, one of which uh, fronted Olive Street and the other which fronted uh, Revere Beach Park. Both of those lots came in a common ownership of the applicants back in December and merged by operating law. The um, the the uh, the property is situated in a residential neighborhood and it's a, a, the property itself, the lot is irregularly shaped. An existing two-story structure is currently situated on the property. And that is the principal structure on the property. That that building was built approximately seventy years ago. An old dilapidated shed is also situated on the property closest to the Olive Street roadway. So what we're proposing on the left side of the building, um, interestingly, the existing structure um, is situated six feet, four inches from the boundary lot line uh, on the left side of the structure and the pro- proposed addition would be situated this distance of seven feet, eight inches from that property line, which is uh, as you know, less than what is currently there, the existing conditions, as they say. Create a a non-conformity creator. Or shall I say encroach into the minimum side yard more than the proposed addition will. So we're not creating any new non-conformities on the left side of the building. But nonetheless, it is being proposed seven feet, eight inches from the property line. So we're asking for variance on that left side and on the right side. The proposal is to build the addition, I think it's nine feet, five inches from the property line. So we're asking for variance on the right side of the building.
Um, seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Please unmute yourself or raise your hand using the Zoom app. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Once again, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand. Seeing or hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. I do have a question. Um, was the ward counselor involved in this? Have you had sat down and discussed this with him or her?
No, we haven't.
John, who is this um?
I believe it uh, would be Keith.
Yep, yeah.
That's what I, that's a weird line though, um. That's what I, that's a weird line, though, um. Because I have not had the the, normally, we ask the ward counselor to um, contact us and let us, let. Us know what their feelings are, as they represent the people of that area, um, so I'm concerned that nobody reached out to me, um. So I would like to ask for a continuance on this until we get the ward counselor to uh, be able to speak on it.
Hey, may I ask, uh, Mr. Chairman, was notice sent to the ward counselor?
No, I don't know, but the people should be reaching out to the ward counselor if they're doing anything in the area, um, that's only. A gesture that uh, that they asked, that they know what's going on in their ward, and I don't believe, how, when did the um. Did the abuddies list, did this all get sent out, John, I?
Yes, yes, it did.
At Clark's office, okay. Um, because I did receive a a a call on it, but not having the plot plan, I really wasn't able to um. Go over that with the, with the person.
Do you have a copy of the plot plan, Mr. Chairman?
At the city clerk's office, yes, we do, no. Yeah. Because there was questions on, on the drawings as far as the dimensional crawl being ver- um, controlled, being verified in the field. That's why I wanted to look at the plot plan, because they would be verified on the, on the plot plan, um.
I believe uh, with me today, as you can see um, on the screen, we have uh, the applicant's uh, J P Construction is a. Uh, is the contractor, the general contractor in connection with this matter, uh, his screen is also uh, up on on the. Yeah, the architect, I believe, is also avail- available, Scott Vladsek, are you there, Scott? Would you like to hear from the architect, I can get him on.
Well, I I I just want to verify the plot plan, it's a certified plot plan.
It is the certified plot plan.
It is a certified plot plan.
Done by audience wire.
So the shape of the lot, it goes from the six feet on the left down to the seven, eight?
Yes.
There's a ten foot sewer easement noted under the proposed addition also, under, appears to be under the house also.
Yeah, that was the other question that um, I don't know if that was brought up when they went to site plan review, because I don't see anything from Frank Stringey saying about an easement, which he normally would. In in Frank Stringey's notes, it just saying that it was denied based on the um, the non-compliance with the minimum side yards. Requirements of ten feet and a lot greater than six thousand within the Abbey District. So I do have concerns that need to, uh, that I need to get answered on, especially for having the sewer easement, and then. Just that the ward counselor be notified of this.
Who is the ward counselor?
I believe it's uh, Councilor Keith, um, did, does the applicant know if they, if they voted in the area for um, the ward counselor, they know which one they have? I would have to find out based on the address.
Ms. Lemus? Who is the uh, who is the ward counselor?
I think it's Keith.
Have you had any conversations with the Councilor Keith?
No, never, no.
Yeah, I would ask for a continuance, um, so.
Scott, uh, Scott Vladsek on the line? I don't see him.
No, I don't see him either.
And I, and I apologize for my video, um, I'm having problems with my camera, I don't know what's going on, so.
No problem.
I don't mean to be in darkness, I apologize.
What's the wish of the members, I I would like to ask for a continuance so that the ward counselor um, can be notified, and then also, we can ask. For the Department of Public Works and the um, Building Department to look at the sewer easement to see if actually a foundation can be placed over it. So I'd ask for a roll call, John.
Question before the board is continuing this uh, matter until November eighteenth at four P M, Al, the question is continuance. Yes. Mr. Bichilli votes yes to continue. Mr. Limina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter is continuing till November fourteenth. No further business.
Of the November eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
So I would ask the applicant to please reach out to your ward counselor, um, and also, um, I will be reaching out to the Building Department, which. Your construction company should probably do too, if there's an easement on there, would be concerned about the easement and a foundation being built on top of it. Okay, so our next meeting will be November eighteenth at four P M.
Twenty-eighth, Michael.
No, eighteenth.
No.
Twenty-eighth, the the next meeting.
Special one item meeting. Yeah, but we have the, for us, we have a meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, for an item that um, was not on this calendar.
Right.
However, the continuance for these calendar item numbers will be November eighteenth at four P M.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for all your participation, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, that concludes the meeting. Alrighty, bye-bye.
Bye, guys.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, Ashley.